Windsor Board of Education meeting Wednesday, January 18th, 2023 to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The next order of business is superintendent's presentation of the 2023-2024 budget. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, President Fury, and welcome guests online and here in the boardroom. So I'm going to go over my proposed budget for the 2023-2024 school year. This is, we're not getting into the details of each point in the budget, but you are welcome to come back to our individual meetings that you'll see at the end of my presentation that we'll do over the next few weeks after tonight. And that is when we actually go into the budget and explore it out by departments and school buildings. And so you get a much deeper look at the numbers in each one. But that will not be the case tonight. Tonight is just superintendent's proposed budget and a general overview. All right, so, next slide. Okay, so as I start off each year, before I talk about the obligations here, I like to say that we're not as focused on COVID as we have been the prior two years. However, we have seen an increase in prices of pretty much everything in our life. And so, again, I'm always cognizant of what's going on financially with us here in our society, particularly here in the state and in our town. So trying to be sensitive to that, but understanding that we still have contractual obligations that we have to meet as a school district. And those obligations are, first and foremost, is the contractual obligations for our employees. So we have six bargaining units, teachers, administrators, parent educators, the administrative professionals, our nurses, and then we have a group that's comprised of custodians, maintenance, food service, and safety monitors. And so each year, those contracts include raises, gross wage increases, and some of the contract steps for their employees. So those are obligations that we have to meet as a school district each year. So that's the first portion, next one. And then we have important areas such as technology, physical plant, and special education. So in technology, of course, that budget increases each year because the software that we purchase, it doesn't stay at the same price for our licenses. Equipment has to be replaced. We've been, I've actually pulled back in a lot of replacement recommendations from the technology department. I know they would much prefer that we do a lot grander level of replacement. But in trying to be sensitive again to the budget and what we're going to present to the board and, you know, hopefully to the town, I didn't want us to have a much larger number. So even this percentage increase is really a bare bones percentage increase, as I said, based on the annual cost increases of licenses and software and some equipment upgrades. Also, we have the physical plant. You see our utilities and operational costs have increased to the tune of 0.58% or $442,000. As I said already, that the cost of everything pretty much has gone up. And so we'll see these costs constantly reflected throughout this proposed budget. In special education, we see a 1.56% increase or just over a million dollars in an out-of-district tuition deficit. We, this is a cost. This is not a Windsor issue, and I want to make sure the public clearly understands that. This is not a Windsor issue or even a Connecticut issue, but this is a nationwide issue in terms of special ed costs. We just really, I mean, just due to IDEA, we're required legally to meet the needs of all of our students, and those needs have various costs. And we don't have any control over that. Just a few outplace students. Those would be students who are not being formally educated in Windsor Public Schools' respective school buildings, but they're at a site offered by a private organization or entity. The cost could be easily, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for just a student. So these are costs that we have no, no control over, and we just will see them continually rise. Because as we see cost increases to do business here, those organizations, you know, assume they have their cost increases to do business. And in business, cost increases get passed on to the consumer. In this situation, we're the consumer. Next slide. To the next area, excuse me, that's part of our annual increases, employee benefits. So employee benefits include health insurance, dental insurance, life and disability insurance, our 401A, and our FICA Med charges, which gives us a total increase of 0.78% or just under $600,000. And I think we're all, most, I don't see to me, no children here. So we all know what all these are. These are costs that we, we see. We see deductions on our pay stubs, and these are, you know, benefits that we use and need. So the total cost of doing business, when I use this term, I'm talking about just to have the district run because it doesn't run on free money anywhere. It costs to run a school district. So the total cost of doing business, we see our contractual obligations at 1.8 mil, physical plant services, 442,000, technology buzzet, budget, excuse me, 449,000. And our magnet school tuition is another cost that, you know, increases. So $200,000 there. And then, as I just finished with the last slide, our special education out-of-district tuition, 1.56% or 1.1 million. And then our employee benefits at another almost 600,000, which in total is a budget increase equal to 6.22% or 4.7 million dollars. Next slide. Estimated revenue to the town, so our educational cost sharing has been flat. So it's still 11 million or 11.5 million. Health services is 58,000, sped excess costs, 1.3 million. Our sped tuition, 150,000. So total estimated revenue to the town is 13,056,066. You see the note to refer to the budget book for a complete listing of these grants and monies. Next slide. So in order for us to not present that six-plus percent, you know, cost of doing business number to you, as I, as I've talked to folks, there's no way I could present a number like that and expect anyone to accept that. We had to start finding cuts. So we found cuts, as I mentioned, in technology budget and other areas, first and foremost. I always try and have for many years as an administrator to do cuts and budget cuts in terms of, you know, reducing costs is far away from the students as possible. But it's just, it becomes, you know, increasingly difficult to do that. And so we do have staffing reductions, as you see noted here. So 1.0 would be one position or one FTE at the high school for a social studies teacher, one for a family and consumer science teacher, and then we have one for a science teacher. And then we have two, I'll just say, to be announced or at large at this point, two more FTEs that are going to be cuts in order for us to continue to shave our budget. Next slide. Thank you. So total operating cost for '22-23 was 76,484,436. The dollar increase to the budget is equal to 4.84% or $3,699,575. So our total operating cost for this upcoming school year, 2023-2024, will be $80 million, 184,011. And as I said, this was superintendent's proposed budget overview. So for the public, and of course, the board and finance committee will already be there along with myself and my staff, we will flesh out the budget line by line, department by department, on these dates, starting Tuesday, January 24th, 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Then it'll be January 31st, that Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., again, here in the boardroom. And then Tuesday, February 7th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. And then we have finance committee only on the 14th at 6:30 p.m. here in the boardroom, if needed. All public forums and finance committee meetings will be held with an audience-to-visitors portion at each meeting. BOE adoption of budget is part of a regular BOE meeting on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. So that's the planned adoption date as we stand right now. And that is superintendent's proposed budget for 2023-2024.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Not excited to see the 6% mark that was there. But I know in talking to other board chairs throughout the state, and I haven't talked to them recently, but several weeks ago, everything was coming, most things were coming in between 5 and 10% to roll over. And many were not sure how much below that they were, if any, they'd be able to get to. I have a question, kind of, for you and also for Mr. Lockhart, our finance chair. And I also like Mr. Lockhart to give him an opportunity to react, anything he'd want to add. But more for the audiences as well as to the board, are we going to take, is there an understanding yet? Are we going to take the budget book and, and just go through it? Or is there a rhyme or reason where you may start? Because some parents may want to come specifically for a school, but not come to learn about extracurricular activities or something.
Sure. I'll have Ms. Batil there flesh out for you.
So our first meeting, we plan to review all of the school sites, athletics, and CTE. And then from there, if we're on, on time after that first meeting, we'll hand out a schedule for a company meetings to follow through. But I can also post our, the schedule online if that's helpful to the public also.
Thank you. I know the executive committee met with Dr. Hill, and the understanding was, since we weren't getting the budget today, unless there's something that immediately jumps out at you, the best thing to do is to send questions either based on the PowerPoint or both based on, we start reviewing the budget book, get those in advance of the meeting, our next meeting. Obviously, it sounds like we're starting with the school sites. So questions as, as early as you can, when you have them, to Mr. Lockhart, Dr. Hill, and Sally Brown. So the staff may have to do some work. So if we come that day with them, they may say, well, we'll get it to you next week. So as best you can. It doesn't mean if there are questions as we go through what people are presenting to us, we can't ask folks questions, but to be as efficient as possible. Because we know this is an important project where we'll be looking at, you know, every line item that's there. Mr. Lockhart, anything to add, sir?
The only thing I'll add is that I'm going to try to avoid February 14th for numerous reasons. And, but I typically don't like to have that fourth meeting unless we absolutely have to. So the three meetings that we plan on having, we'll start promptly at 6:00. I'm a stickler for starting on time. And we will not go past 9 o'clock. And there will be a break in the middle. So I want to make sure that we are prepared to ask the questions, study the book, and make sure that we get questions in on a timely fashion so that we can be very efficient with this process. So I don't think we're going to have a problem, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that I'm going to be very to the book, and we're just going to move through the process and answer all the questions that we need to answer. And I will work very closely with Mr. Panos to make sure that his caucus is on board and making sure that all their questions are being answered as well, so.
Thank you. Any other pressing concerns, statements? Okay. The next item is what's called the public forum on the budget, which is limited to 30 minutes. And Alexis, it's really going to be treated similar to an audience-to visitor where people have three minutes. And the focus is to be on items that have to do with the budget. There will be a regular audience-to visitor at item number six on the agenda. We're now at item number four. So if you could read the audience-to visitor script.
Good evening. This is Alexis Shaq from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking "Raise Hand" or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be promoted to panelist. After you make your comments, you will return to attendee status. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you. And for those who are in the room, when you get to two and a half minutes, I'll have Mr. Lockhart raise a red card briefly. When we get to three minutes, he'll raise the red card and hold it, meaning please wrap up your, your comments. If people are calling in or on Zoom, Mr. Lockhart may have to break in at that two-and-a-half-minute mark to, to let you know you need to start winding up. And again, at the three minutes to say, please conclude your remarks. So at this point in time, I'd like to start, I understand there may be a problem with the Zoom at this point. So I'd like to start with people who are in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding the proposed budget. Don't all jump up at once. Anybody online on the phone line? Okay.
My name is Brandon Jubry. I live at 34 Jubry Drive. Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Windsor Travel Basketball Program to appeal to the board regarding the facility rental policy here in town. I've been a resident in Windsor for most 40 years. During that time, I've been involved in youth sports here in town, either as a participant, a coach, or in a leadership role. Among other roles, currently, I'm the coach, a coach, and the director of the Windsor Travel Basketball Program. The program is run by me, two other gentlemen who are also volunteers. We also get support from the children's parents in town who are part of the program. The Travel Basketball Program offers an opportunity for children in Windsor to compete at a higher level beyond what the recreational programs in town offer and serves as a feeder program to the Windsor High School Basketball Program. More importantly, the program instills confidence, accountability, teamwork, work ethic, and focuses on building successful students in the classroom and positive contributors to their homes and society. There is currently no other basketball program in town like this. Currently, the Windsor Travel Basketball Program is home to approximately 30 kids between the grades of six and eight who live in Windsor. The program is funded entirely by registration fees paid by the parents, fundraisers, and donations. The program is run at a break-even point financially, even with the fundraising efforts and the small amount of donations that we receive. Currently, our program is being treated as a non-Windsor program. Because of this, we are being charged an hourly rental fee when using the Windsor High School's gym for home games. This translates into roughly $1,400 as a cost to the season, to the program per season. This is $1,400 that our program does not have. To put it in perspective, last year, we played 100% of our home games at our opponent's gyms because we could not afford to play in Windsor. So I'm here to ask the members of the board that you please reconsider your current policy and treat our program as you would any other town program. Given that our kids, parents, and volunteers are all residents of Windsor, I see no reason why it would not be. Treating our program as a town-based program would save our Windsor families approximately 1,400, excuse me, $1,400 annually and significantly improve the viability of our program. Additionally, this could possibly be the difference between a child being able to participate or not. So with that, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room like to address the board? Alexis, is anybody online or on the phone?
Mr. President, there is no one with their hands raised or any Q&amp;As in the question feature.
Mr. President, are we able to confirm that we're actually connected via Zoom to make sure that no one's not excluded from this process?
I'm looking for our, our tech support.
So it looks like it requires a webinar passcode. I believe that if I were to end the Zoom, I can't edit it while the Zoom's going on. So if I end the Zoom, edit the thing so it removes the passcode, and it's started again, no one will need to use the passcode to log in.
Mr. President, make a motion to end the Zoom and start it again as folks are not able to get in and participate.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like the recommendation that basically what we're doing is going into a recess until we can confirm that we're disconnected and then reconnect it and then pick back up where we are, which is audience to visitors for the virtual piece.
Any agreement? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention. Motion carries 900. We're in a brief recess.
Mr. President, are we able to confirm that we are now live?
I'm hoping the answer is ahead of a nod, nod of a head, we are, we are live. Apologize for that technical problem. We're told that this is being broadcast on WinTV and that the Zoom is up, but you may have to, if anybody's listening on their phone, you may have to type in the, the ID for the meeting and not just click on a link. And for those who, who missed the PowerPoint that was done, it's my understanding that it should be tomorrow on the website of Windsor Public Schools, hopefully both the PowerPoint and, and the book itself for people to, to see. So at this point, I'm going to ask Alexis, is there anybody on the phone or Zoom or whatever?
Mr. President, at this time, there are no individuals with their hand raised, and there are no questions in the Q&amp;A feature.
Last call for anybody in the boardroom. Seeing and hearing none, without objection, I'll close the public forum on the budget. And according to what we posted, we will now have a five-minute recess. And I say be here promptly at five, in five minutes.
Seven fifteen.
So at 7:15, we're adjourned at 7:10 in recess. We are back in session. Next item is item number five, recognitions and acknowledgements. We have a recognition for Abigail Morgan-Vial, Board of Education representative. This is her last meeting, and we want to honor her here. So if you could come up, and Dr. Hill will present, give you, present you with certificate.
Hey, be yourself. That's going to be me in about five, six years. All right, you ready for a motion, Mr. President?
Yep.
Mr. President, I have two motions, sir.
Recognizing Mr. Lockhart.
First motion is I move that the Board of Education add the following agenda item to tonight's meeting. Discussion of student dress code with possible vote to have policy committee revise the student dress code to add that pants or trousers be worn around the waist and that no underwear will be visible nor any part of the buttocks or genitals is visible, end quote, with anticipated action, in parentheses.
Is there a second?
A second.
And because we are adding this to the agenda, this does require a two-thirds vote. Because any further discussion, any discussion about it?
Yes, I'd like to bring up the fact that this, this topic properly was brought before us, but the timing of it would have made it very difficult for the staff to post within a 24-hour timeframe. So therefore, it was an agreement that we would bring it up under this format under two-thirds majority. But I wanted the public to know it was three people that, that agreed to this, but it did not get in enough time so that the staff can post it in a reasonable manner.
Anything you want to say about it?
Oh.
Do you?
We can discuss it under the agenda.
I would like to see an amendment to the motion to include a broader discussion around the dress code policy.
Okay, well, I think what, what's going to happen, this is just to add this, so when we have that discussion, you can talk about that. But part of that discussion will be combining this with whatever Windsor High School, the Action Club, and maybe the School Governance Council comes up with and presents to us. So the policy committee would just have to meet on, on everything that's presented regarding the dress code.
Thank you.
Okay, without any further.
And just, and just, this will be placed, if this is approved, this will be item 10C on the agenda, item 10C.
We can add that because our agenda ended at 10B, number six, Paquonic School in the school report. So this will, this will be added as 10C if this passes. Are we ready for the vote on? Are we ready for the vote on adding this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 900. Next motion, Mr. Lockhart.
Yes, I moved that the Board of Education add an agenda item to tonight's meeting to go into executive session to discuss a matter involving confidential student records.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Is this regarding executive session, to go into executive session? This also requires a two-thirds vote because we're adding it tonight. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, my own discussion is this will go between item 14 and 15. I believe we should do audience to visitors first and then go into executive session. And then when we come out of the executive session, we can handle any matters that may need to be done before adjournment.
Good idea. So all those in favor of adding this item to go into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 900. Next item on the agenda is audience to visitor. This is a general audience to visitor time, not limited to the budget.
Good evening. This is Alexis Shaq from the superintendent's office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar, or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be promoted to panelist. After you make your comments, you will return to attendee status. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you. Again, I think I'll take folks that are here in the boardroom if you'd like to address the board, and the same rules apply, that Mr. Lockhart will raise a red card at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, just to let you know to start winding down, and at the three-minute mark, he'll hold it up. And please, at that point, conclude your remarks. For people either phoning in or on Zoom, Mr. Lockhart will probably have to say, at least for the telephoners, that your two-and-a-half minutes are there and then three minutes to be up. So again, someone would like to address the board, please come to the desk here.
Sonia Turner, 41 Becker Circle. I am a Windsor resident, a taxpayer, and a parent. My daughter attends Windsor High School. She is an AB student and takes honor classes. Last year, she was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. She was also diagnosed with social anxiety and depression. She is a good daughter, and I am honored to be her mother. On Thursday, January 5th, my daughter was assaulted in her math class. She was sitting at her seat when a student came up and hit her in the head. As a result, my daughter suffered a concussion, and 14 days later, her symptoms are still severe. The Windsor High School Code of Conduct states that they promote a positive learning environment, including showing respect towards others, behaving in a responsible manner, obeying all school rules, including safety rules. Students are responsible for conducting themselves properly in a responsible manner. This conduct was not extended to my daughter, and my daughter's educational process was seriously disrupted, and the positive learning environment that Windsor High School is trying to promote was violated. The lack of communication with the school gave the appearance that my daughter was not a priority and that they did not care about her physical or mental well-being. I constantly kept reaching out to the school, and I received one email and a phone call four days later. The school continues to deny my daughter a positive learning environment by keeping the aggressor in the classes with her. This is not a safe learning environment for my daughter. My daughter has been traumatized. Additionally, I had a conversation with a person at the high school this morning who made it seem like my daughter and I were lying about the incident or the fact that this student is always putting her hands on my daughter. I was told that we need to move forward and not dwell in the past. How can I move forward when every day I'm witnessing the results of what happened to my child? I entrusted the Windsor Public School system to educate my daughter, allow her to have fun learning, help her develop friendships, to keep her safe, and to help her be a productive citizen. The trust is broken. When I took my daughter to the hospital, the doctor began to discuss what a concussion was and the symptoms it could present. That is when my mind began to go into what-if statements. What if my daughter had a brain bleed? What if my daughter had a fractured skull? What if my daughter did not wake up Friday morning? Who would have thought that their child could sustain a concussion while sitting in math class? The Windsor High School Student Handbook states that it wants to promote a positive, safe, and non-disruptive learning environment? Are these words just written in a handbook, or are they meant for the students to live by? Have the students seen or even read the handbook? We cannot turn a blind eye to what is happening in the schools. No student or parent should have to endure what my daughter and family has. So I leave you to think about this. What if what happened to my daughter happened to your child while in school?
Thank you for your remarks. Anyone else like to address the board who's in the boardroom? Alexis, anybody online?
Mr. President, there are no individuals with their hands raised and there are no questions in the Q and A feature.
Without objection from the board, I'll close audience to visitor. Audience to visitor is closed. Next item is the consent agenda, and are there any items that board members wish to Food service report? Anything else anybody wants pulled? Mr. President? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items 7A, 7B, and 7D, which is financial, enrollment, and human resources report.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of approving 7A, 7B, and 7D, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 900. Do you have another motion, Mr. Lockhart?
Move the Board of Education approve consent agenda items 7C, food services report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Discussion, Mr. Panos?
This is the expenses, the net income is $109,000, and we now have an opening balance, $1,836,000. That is a cushion of, or what is the status of, I mean, it looks like we make, we make quite a bit of profit per month. Is that what is happening here?
So this is only due to all of the reimbursement from the federal government the past year and a half. So that's why we have so much money. We've been trying to spend it down, but because of all of the backorders on deliveries, we have, you know, we have purchased freezers, walk-in coolers that were needed because we can't carry this large of a balance per federal guidelines. But again, we can't get the actual equipment in to our school, so we can't expend it yet. But this is not something we would normally, we don't make this kind of money.
Yeah, I haven't seen these numbers.
Yeah, it's all because of all of the federal reimbursement we've been receiving for giving free food.
And what do you expect to happen with this? Does this have, this has no budget implications or anything like that or money?
No, and we can't.
It's a slush fund that we could use.
And we can't, we can't use it to help offset negative balances either. The federal government won't let us.
Okay, so it's with, yeah, and so we return money? What do we do?
No, we don't return, so we utilize it within the food service department. So we have purchased a few freezers and walk-in coolers, so this number is just waiting for the deliveries to come in because it's, everything's on backorder.
Okay, so that's what that, okay, it'd probably take up a lot of this money, is that the idea? Just give us an idea here, remind me, again, the accounts receivable, I see here, $110,000, is, what, that's not sales. That is money that we receive from, who, I'm talking about December, if you go up to the top there, December 2022, there's $110,063,82, what, accounts receivable, I guess, I guess I'm just trying to, just remind me, what, what is that item?
So that is anything above what we, it's, see how it's reimbursement, state account receivable, so that is the money from.
Oh, that's, that's part of the, okay.
Our reimbursements, right.
State accounts. Okay, so they're, they're, they're giving us for each student or something?
Yeah, so anytime, anytime a student goes through the lunch line, they punch in their number. If that student is free or reduced.
Okay.
We receive a portion of that money back.
And, and what, and could you explain the miscellaneous rebates and grants here, just to top it off? Just below that.
So these would be grants that we receive, more donation-type, not reimbursements, it's more donations that we receive. Sometimes we receive, if we put, depending on how large our milk order is, we will get a reimbursement check after they deliver, depending on the supply versus the demand.
Okay, this is from, generally from suppliers that we purchase things.
Right, right.
Okay.
But we also receive, you know, I don't want to, they're not grants, because I know, I don't want people to think it's grants from the state or feds, but we do receive grants or donations from companies for different initiatives that we do, with all the healthy food, the healthy plate.
You mean like food, food companies mainly?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding this item? Say all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 900. Next item is approval of minutes.
Hi. I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the December 20th, 2022 special meeting and the December 20th, 2022 regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion on either of those minutes?
These are, wait a minute here. Oh, that's a public forum, I'm sorry. We have another, we had a special meeting, didn't we? That was earlier in the month, the presentation?
Yeah, that was, that was going over December.
Oh, we did, okay.
We've done those in December.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Not seeing any other comments. All those in favor approving the minutes on December 20th, 2022 special meeting and December 2022 regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions. Motion carries 900. Next we have the student representative report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, this is my final meeting. As the student representative, I would like to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to represent my peers. It has been a pleasure and true honors my peer entrusted me with such a task. The dress code survey, collecting data from students, faculty, and staff, and community members, has been sent out and is collecting valuable data from our Windsor Public Schools community. Of the 211 current responses, 67.8% are from students, 30% are from district employees, including teachers, paraeducators, administrators, administrative assistants, and SEL specialist, custodial staff, school counselors, tutors, a PSES teacher, and security. The remainder are from community members and parents. Student responses show a desire for the dress code to be reviewed and altered. Only 7.7% of responding students chose no change. Students noted the reasoning behind the desire for change. Many students cited racism in certain items, especially 1B, as restricting durags and bonnets restricts cultural headwear worn predominantly by African-American students, and that particular headwear is mostly used for the protection of hairstyles and hair types of people of color. Beyond this, students responded that the background of why certain items were implemented is rooted in racism, as assuming gang affiliation from durags and bonnets targets African-American students and unjustly connects them with gang affiliation. Many students also cited gender inequality within the dress code, particularly items 1I and 1K. Students stated that most boys don't wear items that are listed in the dress code, therefore the code itself targets young women. Many female students also noted that the dress code causes them to feel sexualized. Students further cited inequity in the enforcement based on body type, and female identifying students with larger chests are dress coded disproportionately. Beyond inequities, many students mentioned that it often gets cold in the school. Those with health issues such as low iron and anemia are especially affected, and therefore students should be able to wear outerwear, which is not permissible under item 1A. Many students agree that the rule for no hoods or full-face covers on account of security, but believe hats, caps, headscarves, athletic headbands, and bandanas should be allowed as it does not detract from a learning environment, and they are often used to keep warm when the school is cold or as a form of self-expression. Across a broad range of student responses, an idea of what should remain in the dress code was formed. The consensus was do not cover the full face, no nudity or visible private parts, no visible undergarments, and no symbols or images that promote illegal activity. District employees also exhibited a desire for dress code revision. Of the respondents, only 23.3% chose no change. District employees also cited racial, gender, and body type discrimination within the dress code. Many respondents had a similar opinion that item 1B is discriminatory against those of African-American descent, and headwear should extend past religion to cultural needs. Many concurred that item 1I targets a young woman and those with larger chests, and both 1J and 1K exhibit sexism. Respondents also mentioned they felt as the dress code sexualizes girls, which makes them uncomfortable with enforcing it. Employees also remarked that the building is often cold, therefore outerwear and certain headwear should be permitted. Multiple employees responded that bans on hats and headwear cause more disruptions to learning than permitting students to wear these items, and so as long as the items do not cover the ears or full face, many are okay with headwear. The responses of the employees show a similar idea to the students of what the dress code should include. The dress code should ban full-face coverage for identification purpose, hoods in order to see headphones, nudity, visible private parts, and visible undergarments. Of eight community members, only two chose no change. Otherwise, community members cited sexism and discrimination by body type and remarked that outerwear should be permitted when it is cold. Beyond the dress code itself, both students and faculty displayed discomfort with enforcement of the dress code. Of 54 students who have been dress coded, 35 felt very uncomfortable or uncomfortable, 14 felt neutral. Of 104 students who witnessed someone being dress coded, 63 replied it made them very uncomfortable or uncomfortable, 30 felt neutral. Of 35 employees, 12 said dress coding student, a student made them feel very uncomfortable, 13 felt neutral. Many employees responded they felt uncomfortable dress coding students. Some reported the uncomfort stemmed from feeling as though they were racially profiling. Others reported they did not feel comfortable regarding female dress to check whether inappropriate or appropriate. Many employees reported that they may not dress code someone as it causes an issue, whereas the mode of dress of the student does not. Some employees answered that there would not be follow-through if they did dress code the student. Students and faculty also agree that the dress code is not fairly enforced. 94 of 143 students answered that they don't believe that the dress code is fairly enforced, 39 were unsure. Only 10 students answered that the dress code was fairly enforced. Of responding district employees, 90% responded that they did not believe the dress code was fairly enforced. Across the three response categories, most respondents believed that the dress code is outdated and should be reviewed to be more equitable and with the times. Multiple students and employees expressed interest in providing input to revise and update the dress code. This district believes in the student and community involved. This district believes in student and community involvement and policy, evidenced by my own position, students, staff and parents on the school governance council, and student involvement in implementing SEL within the district. This belief in involvement should extend to the dress code, a policy which directly affects students, educators, administrators, parents and the community as a whole. The data displays that the majority of those in the Windsor Public Schools desire a change. I implore the Board of Education to listen to our voices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else to add? I mean, that was all on the dress code or do you have anything else that?
Yes, again, thank you very much. Those opportunities, it's been a very good experience.
Questions for Abby?
Well, a question, I just wondered if you could share the, the written things with us because you were speaking a bit rapidly for some of us who. Okay.
Other questions? Uh, in, in, I'm wondering, I, I think you, you were a member of the, the Action Club.
Um, I've been working jointly with them.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't been able to attend very many meetings because of my other upper school obligations. However, I'm very well intentioned what they're trying to do and I know those people in the Action Club.
And do you know, again, this is unfair since if you haven't been actively involved with them, but do you know, um, whether or not that's going to go to the school governance council? And I don't know if Nathan or Ayana, if you, either of you know? Because, uh, I'm just thinking of a timeline for, unfortunately, you're graduating. But if we're trying to do something potentially for next year and we are already talking about another item on, on the dress code being sent to, uh, that'll probably be sent to policy. Uh, it would be good for that, for whatever the school comes up with, and I know Mr. Parker left, but, um, that it would be good to get something from the school in, in a time that's reasonable that the policy committee may have a lot of work to do. It may be more than one policy meeting on this or members might feel we need a input from the public as well as a, a special meeting about this if we're going to make significant changes, so.
As far as I'm aware, um, this idea has not been on the school governance council since I saw it.
Sure.
Myself included, I brought it up.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I'm almost positive that those student representatives are not affiliated with the Action Club as well.
Okay. Mr. Panos?
You said that this is the second time that you mentioned this. Um, the last time, also, um, it seems that there's a lot of the thought that the dress code as it is, is not being enforced. Is that, is that accurate?
Many teachers responded that if they did enforce it, it would likely not be followed through administration. And many teachers also responded they didn't feel uncomfortable, that they felt uncomfortable, um, enforcing the dress code as it is.
It's, so, okay, and now, part of this is also that you've, they, they mentioned that the, the dress code is out of date. Did that include the suggestion to wear outer garments, you know, I mean, uh, coats too? Is, is, is that, is that what they're thinking? That, that twenty years ago, they didn't, they didn't get cold? Or, or, or you had too much air conditioning now or what?
I believe that directly correlates with, um, item one I, one J and one K and one B. Um, as I had before mentioned, both district employees and students mentioned that they felt multiple items had racial discrimination and sexual discrimination as well as discrimination by body type. I believe that is the not with the times portion.
I, J and K are where? What, I'm sorry, where?
For the policy.
Oh, oh, in the, oh, in the policy, okay, I'm sorry.
At the beginning of this meeting, I handed out graphs and if you look at the very back page of the graph, it has everything listed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think also.
This is the policy. So, yeah, I have this, I just say, okay, so they. So for example, you, you say that wearing see-through clothing is, uh, discriminatory?
That is not one of the idea, uh, items that they found discriminatory. That is simply something that they've, uh, said they wouldn't mind seeing changed.
Okay.
Dr. Hill, I think you stole my graph.
You said I, J, K.
It's item nine.
Wait a minute, the, the number nine? Okay, on the graph?
Yeah, in the back.
Oh.
Yes, there's an, the entire, uh, dress code is outlined on the legend in the back.
He was referring to IJs and Ks and now we're talking about numbers, right? Oh, okay, well, I gotta stay with you, you know.
I apologize. When I was creating the graphs, the formater would not let me put in, uh, letters. Instead, it made me do item one, item two.
Okay, so, so the item is shirts, shirts or blouses that reveal the abdomen, chest cleavage or undergarments?
Yes, they found this discriminatory specifically by, um, body type. So they found that disproportionately, students, uh, who are female identifying with larger chests are dress coded very much more often under this particular item than other students might be. They also found that this item is almost always used to dress code females instead of males as well.
Right, well, undergarments also, well, I can, I, I can see what you, why you'd say the shirts or blouses. That's just, that, uh, but we're going to address this a little bit, uh, a little bit later, you know, that, uh, it's very good that you brought that topic up at last, last meeting.
Ms. Cantor, did you, you had your hand raised or that?
I'm okay.
You're okay, okay. Think you were trying to help explain where things were. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Wallaston?
Uh, I just wanted to say this is a very good presentation overall. There's some hard work here and, uh, it's very commendable because you didn't, we didn't pay you, you didn't get paid to do this, you know? A lot of people wouldn't do this for free, so.
And, uh, Mr. Panos, I will send out the data to each person on the board.
Thank you.
Other comments about the report? Mr. Alton Lockhart, no.
She's going to send the data and she's going to send the actual written report, so.
Written, yeah.
To the committee, so. That's all I want.
Mr. Wall, Mr. Wallaston?
And you also did a good job being non-biased and speaking from a, just middle ground standpoint, so kudos for that as well.
And, uh, I think we all applaud the work that you've done, um, not only on this but, um, throughout how you've brought student views and, and not just your own to, to us. That's very important for us to have representatives that, that do that. And, um, I know we wish you very much success and especially on the dress code. I know you were working when I was on the school governance council and you had brought it up, but not to be able to hopefully see the fruits of your labor, but thank you so much for your service to us. Any other comments? Knowing that this is exam week, midterm week, uh, clearly feel free to go. You're probably exempt from it.
No, um, I took the main exam today for calculus, passed that, and so now I can stay the whole time.
Oh, wonderful.
She says she got time there.
Okay, thank you. You're always welcome to, but I was, I was thinking this time you were really ready to go out.
Wait a minute, they corrected already?
Yeah.
Well, you guys are really.
I was getting paid dollars.
He's getting ready to prepare for next time. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, Board of Education's, the President's Report. Happy twenty twenty-three to whoever's still listening in the public and to all my board members and the staff here. Folks have enjoyed their December break that they had and I know everybody's already back, back at it, working hard. We have the superintendent's proposed budget tonight. He's been working on with the staff. The board has just seen and heard the budget for the first time and, uh, we've set, as we've mentioned before, a number of committee meetings we'll discuss that we'll be having and so there's more opportunity for, uh, public comment. Because of a problem we had with Zoom, uh, we may be having the superintendent, uh, reprise his, uh, uh, report that he gave earlier tonight so more people can, can see that. But as I mentioned earlier, it hopefully will be up tomorrow on the Board of Education website, both the PowerPoint and the entire budget book. Uh, Mr. Panos, uh, Mr. Wallaston, Ms. Taylor and I attended the Martin Luther King Junior Ceremony on Monday sponsored by the Archer Memorial M A E, M A E, A N E Zion Church at Town Hall. We had an opportunity to introduce ourselves to the audience. Uh, the incredible keynote speaker, probably wondered why I didn't mention that he was there, uh, was our vice president here, Leonard Lockhart, who told his truth and shared his wisdom with us. Uh, there were also, we had four Sage Park students who were selected who inspired us with their perspectives on the power of youth and young people in the fight for civil rights and social justice. Also in attendance were State Representative Jane Garibay, Miriam Khan and Bobby Gibson and from the town council, Nushet Black Burke. I know it may be mentioned later on, but Sage Park, uh, has a VEX IQ robotics competition this Saturday that's open to the public at Sage Park and, uh, their team will be, teams will be competing there. Also, First Robotics is holding a competition at Sage Park on Saturday, February first, fourth. Sorry. That concludes my report. Any questions? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go into school liaison reports, first for the high school, Ms. Taylor and Mr. Wallaston.
One thing they's going to do, he's going to tell you about the robotics. I'm not going to hold you. I love it.
Your son sometimes participates.
He does. I'm excited about it too. It's awesome. Okay. Um, it was already mentioned, but it's, uh, the midterm exams are being taken this week uh, by our high school students, um, wishing them well. Um, it was very busy in the middle of the two exams. I had to go pick up my child because when they're done, they're done. They want to go. Um, but wishing them all well and, and rest and all those things. There's one thing that I want, wanted to, to lift up and people may have seen it in the news and, um, some people may have, uh, witnessed it, um, at the game on Monday. Um, I just want to personally, as a Board of Education member, um, for Windsor, uh, to denounce the violence that has been happening at high school sports games. Um, I personally am disgusted by adults acting like children and, um, putting other people and families and our athletes in danger. Um, I think there's, um, something to be said about going to a sports game in, or your local town, uh, high school and being safe and feeling safe or dropping your child off and, and them feeling safe or having your child play and them feeling safe. Um, I'm not saying this is a Windsor thing. It is not. It's been in, in the news and it's been kind of going on, um, for quite some time. But I think it's time for adults, if you cannot be an adult, you should not be in our schools watching our children play if you're not able to, to remain calm and, and let the children play. So I just want to personally denounce any violence, um, that comes into our schools, especially our school gyms. Um, and I'll let Nathan take it from there.
Oh, yeah, as Ms. Taylor said, I think, I believe it's been, um, three or four altercrations across the state, just not, not in Windsor, but just across various schools, just in the past few days. So I would just piggyback off of that and even vouch to parents to say, if you can't be there with your student to really supervise them or if you can't really trust your student outside of the, the, your supervision in that gym, then they really shouldn't be there by themselves because we don't need to, um, have anyone else being in an unsafe situation. And it boils down to how we are, um, sending our kids out and what our kids are doing when they're out and how adults are conducting themselves as well. But, um, to end on a more positive note, good luck to all our students who are testing this week. Parents try to be as supportive as they can to the students during this stressful and high anxiety time. No one likes standardized test or tests of any form as they are not fun, but I'm sure we all can do great because we're all Windsor kids, you know? We got the best of the best here.
Thank you. Questions for Windsor High School?
We also have school governance on the twenty-third. So the twenty-third of March, we have our school governance council meeting. Very excited. So just continue to do the work.
Any questions for Windsor High School? Reps here. Seeing and hearing none. Sage Park, Jeremy, I'll have you start.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On, uh, January, January twenty-fifth is going to be the choir concert, um, from seven to eight P M. Um, performer, um, um, if you're performing, um, that night, um, you should be arriving at Sage at, uh, Park at, at, uh, six thirty. Um, January twenty-sixth is a, um, um, a parental information, uh, meeting regarding the, uh, the Cape Cod trip in the auditorium. And as our President Fury, uh, mentioned, um, on Saturday, February fourth is going to be the, the robotics competition at Sage Park. Tuesday, February seventh, um, is a professional development day. Um, there will be no school that day. February eighth is the seventh grade, uh, con, content night. And, uh, um, also wanted to mention, um, um, our Sage Park, um, woodworking class was, was in the news recently. Featured on, 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 on a, a news eight. They were, um, uh, working on some great, great skills, um, 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 in, in woodworking that they can, um, you know, not only use now but in the future, in the future as well. And I, I just thought it was a great piece and I wanted to share it with all of you. That's all I have for Sage Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clace?
I just wanted to add, I know there's been a lot of, um, interest in tech ed, um, in the high school level, but I wanted to point out that's really that, a lot of that program of study starts in the middle school as well. And so if you just Google it, you can see how much strength and base is built up in the middle school. So I wanted to draw the public's attention to that. And also, as difficult as this week can be for our students, it's also difficult for the families. So I just want to tell everybody, please be, help, take, um, health and wellness as a serious matter while you try to get your students prepared for their tests and be well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Sage Park? Next school is Clover Street School. Mr. Lockhart?
Listening to report, just want to remind parents to read through the Friday updates that Clover Street sends the emails out to the parents. And if you want anything that's live time, make sure you go to the website on the Clover Street, um, school page and you can grab updates from there as well.
And it was great to see Ms. Lee in attendance from Clover Street for, for MLK celebration at Town Hall. John F. Kennedy, Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, staffing update. They had a fifth grade teacher resign in December. I'm not sure I can pronounce the last name right. It's Mr. Tatishi or Tatishi. And they are going to be looking for a teacher to replace that fifth grade at the, the beginning of the year. And also, Ms. Fridus is going to be going on maternity leave, March first. And they're looking to find a long-term substitute to teach the students. Um, also, we had a presentation in the fall about the students' learning and what they were doing to, um, be better focused on their education. So they said that they're going to continue to work in PLC on data analysis and conversations around instructional practice and focus on the small groups, group groups, uh, progress monitoring of students and needed levels of support. And they do have a vacancy in each area. It's Domeni LA in grade five. And Sonya and Suho, the instructional coaches, are going to be supporting assigned subs and teaching. and teaching in that area. Saturday detention reminder, JFK Administration, working along with Sage Park, will begin to use a Saturday detention model for consequences of students with behavioral problems. And tomorrow night, the JFK Strings and Band Concert will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And there is a JFK PTO meeting on February 6th from 6:00 to 7:00. And I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or statements on JFK?
Just an update that you probably wouldn't know, because you don't have a JFK student, but we got a text message that Dr. Pierce is under the weather. They're gonna go on ahead and reschedule.
Okay, thank you.
For no problem at all. It just came through in the last, yeah.
No?
I know, me too. I was gonna go, too. I was gonna go, too.
Breaking news.
Yep, straight off the hotline here. It's being rescheduled for Monday, the 23rd at 6:00 in the cafatorium. I always love that word, cafatorium.
Any other questions or statements regarding JFK? Thank you. Oliver Ellsworth, Ms. Golinski.
Yes, thank you. So I have a few updates. As you know, they finally started the watchdogs program, and apparently it has been very successful so far. They've had some great participation. And I have to give my husband a little bit of a shout out, because Stephen Golinski has volunteered twice so far, and has been with both of my children in preschool and second grade. So my daughter did not like that. My son loved it, so, you know. You get what you get. Couple of things coming up tomorrow is the OE SGC meeting. It's virtual, so please, everyone attend if you can. And then they also are having a self-care night, which is next week. And I believe it's next Tuesday, the 24th? I'm sorry, the 26th. And actually, sounds pretty incredible, and I think it's great for these kids to learn, like, what is self-care? Whether it's hygiene, taking care of yourself mentally, physically, emotionally, anything of that nature. I think it's great for anyone to attend. On a slightly different topic, there is a kindergarten student that has come down with a very serious illness. And so the school, Oliver Ellsworth, and the PTO have joined together, as well as the police department. They have fundraised a little bit of money to help this family out. And then the PTO has actually started up what we call, like, a meal train to kind of help this family out. And so if anyone actually wants to help, I believe it's open to anyone to help provide a meal for this family once a week. And if you are interested, you can email Chelsea.j.dow@gmail.com, or simply you can reach out to Mr. Wood, who is the Assistant Principal, and he can guide you in the right direction. But we are just trying to help out this family who is in some very serious need right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, and sorry, so sorry to hear that, however. Any questions for OE? Any questions?
The family are hoping to fundraise in the elementary school. The program I work with, J O P C, we're always looking for a way to help the community. So it's something that I'm stepping up as group manager, so it's definitely something that I can bring to our attention. We could probably make something worth it if I'm there.
Oh, absolutely. I guarantee the family would be up for it. And they seem, I have not personally spoken with them, but they seem very grateful for any sort of help that the community is giving to them.
If, anytime you can give me any information.
Yes, I will. I can always email you, and I can set you up with the right people. Perfect. Thank you.
Next, Paquonic School. Mr. Panos.
Everything's great at Paquonic.
Next item.
Boosterthon has begun, and in just a couple of days, they've raised $3,500 with, just by exercises and something like that. This is quite something. It's amazing. We ought, we ought to do something about, we get on this thing, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of the budget.
Yeah, right? It'll be enough, millions of dollars. Money is coming in.
This is, this will continue until January 27th, and they should have raised, they're probably gonna raise well over $20,000.
Nice.
They're big things. From Friday, they celebrated MLK Day with an assembly, music, singing, and everyone holding hands, and just a great, joyous thing. It was a, they had a great time. The academically, they, the eye-ready diagnostics or scores have just been finished, and they expect to know the progress of the students since the beginning of the year and be able to project until the end. And they're, they're very encouraged. And they have a STEAM thing, a STEM kind of program with the kids, they, where Loomis Chafee students come down and, and help the kids do, you know, reading and science activities. So they say, so kids love it, they say, and they, they would like to get some of the Windsor High School students to participate and help, and so you can take that down to them. There's, there's a signup sheet for the Paquonic School to do this, and the kids will probably enjoy it quite a bit. On Monday, February 6th, it would be PTO meeting, and in February, we will have our own watchdogs, not quite as many as the lineup that was, Benson, Oliver Ellsworth here, but they, they will be doing the breakfast, the pancake breakfast for a whole, anyway. That's the report.
Questions for Paquonic? Ms. Kanter.
Thank you, President Fury. I was just wondering if you know if Loomis Chafee still mentors students at the elementary grade levels for strings, because they used to do that, and it's a great opportunity.
For strings?
Yeah. Because they have one-on-one with their Loomis students.
Yeah.
And it would be something during the week, and it's such a wonderful opportunity. I know we received an email a long time ago from Dr. Pierce, when my son was taking that, and it's really nice having someone, you know, closer in age teach than a, you know, an older adult going to a lesson, because they're not always interested. But the younger students, they seem to show more initiative and learn differently from them. I think it's a great opportunity. They still have that. Thank you.
We'll ask her. It's good for Loomis, eh?
And, you know, on the morning announcements for Windsor High School, I think they continuously talk about opportunities over at Paquonic to come and mentor. So I know that hopefully people are signing up for that, because they keep reminding them it's five community service hours if you volunteer, but you have to commit, I think, for, for five different days to, to do that. Any other questions? Okay. Next item is an item that we've added. Item 10C, and is there a motion?
Yep. A move that the Policy Committee take up the dress code, item presented, and that we expect this to be done along with a recommendation on dress code for Windsor High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. Would someone like to speak to start the discussion on this?
Sure. Well, we've often heard about this particular issue. We don't know how frequently it's done. We're talking about the way some students wear their pants. There seems to be a style. I mean, I, I recall the first time I heard about this, but probably about 30 years ago. I think this was far more in vogue, I think, in the 90s, as I didn't really, you know, I didn't think it was carried on, but I was rather surprised to hear that the style grew out of the penitentiary system. It's not, you know, it's, it's, I think it's a form of machismo or whatever that just derives from the fact that people in penitentiaries are not allowed to have belts, and, is that right? So, you know, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of indecent, and it could well be covered in what is currently said, that you, you're not supposed to expose undergarments, though obviously somebody could say that that was a line intended mainly for female wear, but, you know, someone could certainly carry it under there. So it's kind of surprising that they're not doing it, you know, probably, probably some of it is that, you know, they're told to bring up, put up their pants or whatever that, and then, you know, walk around the corner and bring them, you know, just go back to it. So I, I think that it will be helpful if we made it explicit, just to make sure that the boys understand that they can't be doing this or anything. It really is sort of, it is covered under policy. The policy is not that old, and it's not that old-fashioned. It says, you know, should be modest, in other words, there is a, you know, a, what is the, the particular thing on it, is anything that is not clean or modest and appropriate to school situation. This is, when we write a policy, it's in general terms, and then you look down at the AR, of course, with a more specific. And one could say here that item K, as you were talking about, talks about revealing the undergarments, but this is, this is a matter of where they wear it. So I think we, I think it would help us if we, if we, something, put something more specific, told, you know, the, the Policy Committee, come in with something more specific about, you know, indecent, you know, put something in the policy part of it about the way they wear their, you know, the, the wear, the way they wear should be decent, and make a suggestion for AR that would go along with that, so that makes sure that in a manner, anything that reveals, you know, underwear, undergarments, I think you, you put it very well in, in your motion. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Again, this is really to send this to policy, and my hope is that between all the work that Abby has done and the work that the Action Committee is currently doing, we'll be able to address all the issues regarding dress code. Mr. Wallaston.
Yes, so, as it is, as the motion stands, I don't think I'd be in support of sending this to policy, just because cracking down on, I wear my pants at waist level, and I believe I wear pants at waist level, but I don't support sending something to policy that's gonna crack down on predominantly black kids who are, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and say, let's crack down on sagging. If we're gonna do as our student rep said, let's address the whole entire dress code, let's worry about the whole dress code, let's try to re-envision the whole thing, but I'm not gonna sit here and say, hey, guys, let's crack down on sagging, because we know the population that it targets. And our student rep, a thing she brought up that was very profound is the discrimination within, within the implementation of this policy specifically. So if we decide here from this night that we're going to make it a big ticket item to crack down on sagging, who is that affecting? And how will this play out in the schools? We've seen this time and time again with various issues in society, and when you crack down on these certain issues, it targets a certain people, and I just, I'm, I, I can't in good faith, the way the motion stands, support this motion. Yeah. As, as the student rep said, there, there is many issues within, or there, there's many issues that could be addressed, as she spoke as well. Certain policies are only addressed to women, I mean, certain parts of the policy only really get enforced on women of certain body types, but then this part of the policy, if we decide that we're really gonna crack down it, it's only gonna really affect black kids, if we're being honest. And I'm, I'm not in support of that.
I'm wondering if there's a happy medium here. We have Maker and the Seconder of the motion regarding something along the lines regarding this, you know, this makes it seem as, you know, I was taking this in a broader context and not as literal as this is, that this was not a mandate for the Policy Committee to come up with something explicitly with this statement, but that they would consider this as a significant item to be looking at, and it may, they, part of this may, maybe it ends up being, to me, this would be broad enough to say it ends up being potentially something like this, but not identical to this. I don't know if the Maker or the Suggester, Sett, and Seconder, how they interpret the strictness of, of, of the reading of this.
I would be in.
First, Mr.? Okay.
I would be in support of a more broad take to this.
Mr. Lockhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Wallaston. I made the motion so that we can start discussion, number one. Number two, I, I do agree that this has the potential to target any group of kids. Not gonna be specific, but it, it's, it's very, very subjective rather than objective, in my opinion. So I believe that this is gonna allow the committee to look at it from a broad view and then make any recommendations. I definitely would not support, support any recommendations that would target any group of kids, whether male, female, based off their religious belief or anything like that. I would never do that. But there appears to be an issue that's perceived or actually real, and what I would like to see is if, if we actually do have a policy in place, is it being enforced? So if there's something actually there that needs enforcement, then that's something that we can discuss with the superintendent, and then we move forth. But I'm, I'm not in favor of looking at something that's gonna create something that's more restrictive than, than what we currently have. Now, do we need to make it more current to today's times? That's something the policy can look at, discuss, and make an educated recommendation to the full board for discussion. So I'm looking for broad. I'm not looking for laser-sharp targeting. But I do agree with Mr. Wallaston that overall, that it could easily target one segment rather easily.
What if we change the word revise to consider revising, which allows the Policy Committee to look at all these things and possibly reject all these things, but at least, and we know we're also waiting from the school to come up with suggestions and then, and go there.
I will say, I will say to respond to that, if I'm allowed, Mr. President, that just like any committee, committee can make recommendations, and then they can come before this board, and they can be rejected. So it's just that I really don't want us doing committee work here. I just want to give us our overview of what we feel, take it to committee, allow the committee to do their work, and then come back with the recommendation, and then, and move forth. That's, that's how I see the process.
Ms. Klace, and then Abby.
So I just want to say that I think if the Policy Committee is gonna take this matter up, I think we've very, we've heard very clearly from the student voice and the faculty, educators' voice, and some parent voice, that three, they wanted a few things to happen. One, they wanted more input on the policy around the dress code and the Board of Education. Two, they wanted us to look at the Board of Education policy in its entirety. And so I would like us to not have a motion that just looks at one specific area, but just says to the Policy Committee, we'd like you to go back and revisit the Board of Education dress policy based on these factors, and gathering input from those, those people, those constituent groups, stakeholders, that we need to, so that we're not sectioned to one area, and when we bring you back a policy revision or recommendation, it is more fully vetted and to say, it might be just the same policy, but at least it's say, we took a look at it, and this is what we're recommending. So that would be my recommendation. However, you need to amend the motion if you need to.
Abby?
I would agree with Ms. Klace, and also, Mr. President, you said maybe we could look for a happy medium. Perhaps if you specifically wanted to look at the pants policy, rather than making it a pants policy, you could specify what you mean by undergarments. That way, it's not specifically targeting black and people of color, students, and perhaps that could be your happy medium.
Mr. Panos, and then Ms. Taylor.
Well, first of all, I reject the idea that this is, this targets just black. My son, John, used to do.
I would agree.
Yeah, is that true? I mean, this is, this is, this has become a general thing among, so the style is spread. So it's, it's just that, the, the presentation that Abigail made last meeting, that in the one case, they were not, they were, they were simply not enforcing anything about this. I mean, I think, I think the wording is broad enough that they could have said, well, it's an undergarment. All right. So how do you take that to mean? Well, it's still an undergarment, and that's what, that's what's being revealed. It's actually, and it's not modest in any way, so they could just look at the policy and, and follow it, so you have enough, you have enough wording right now, but the data coming in is that it's not enforced or whatever. So the board has to be a little bit more specific in its policy and its AR, and I don't think that there's anything insulting in here. I mean, if we, you know, it, you know, one would have to conclude that, that the presentation made last month was discriminatory, and I don't think that was the intent of the, of the presentation by the student rep. And so, you know, I, I, I don't think this makes, you know, a lot much sense, you know. We're, we, we know this particular, we have a particular problem, and all we're doing is add. is adding to it. And they can do many other things if you find this, I mean, with regard to, let's say, getting cold and wanting to wear coats, I mean, what you do is you wear a, you wear a sweater in the wintertime. That's, you know, you wear something that keeps you warmer. As I don't understand quite why you have to wear, you know, coats and things like that. So, you know, I think, but I, I think it's important to emphasize this thing because it came to our attention, that we know that this is a particular problem. So yes, you can include it with the rest. Thank you.
Ms. Cantor and then Mr. Halleck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that I know when my son was at the junior high, they were telling people to, you know, drop their pants, drop their sweatpants, and, oh, yes. Mm-hmm. Show their, at the junior high, they were telling them to drop their pants, wear them lower, show their undergarments. This happened when my son was there. Happened multiple times.
Mr. President, to you.
The students, I'm sorry, the students, I'm sorry, the other students were telling, I'm sorry, telling-
I thought Ms. Jorgensen was the one.
I'm so sorry. I'm looking at, I'm like-
I was in caller link.
No, and Mrs. Jorgensen enforced it. You cannot do that. You can't, you have to wear your pants up higher. You can't expose your under, underpants, your undergarments. And the same thing with students wearing see-through clothing. You can't do that. And it's in the policy. So I think the policy needs to be enforced. And it was all students. It just wasn't one student. It, all boys with their sweatpants.
Dr. Halleck and then-
We're having fun.
So this is, you got a vote on whether that is a policy.
Of course.
I think that it should be, I need you also, as you, you know, go to policy, you can do other policies in other districts. And also, you can't go over and go to stuff. So if you have like sweaters, kids don't wear sweaters. So that's what she, that's a, I'm using as a point, I don't open the new discussion. Because that's what she's going to update in the policy. We wore sweats, I still wear sweats. Kids don't wear sweaters. They want to wear a T-shirt and a big coat. That's what stores sell them even now, this day and age. Go to store, ask them what stuff. So, and then the pants, I understand what you're saying at middle school, but I don't want you to think of a shame to lie and it was enforced so that every kid did. Remember, seven hundred of our, almost, you know, twelve hundred students at high school come from middle school. They don't come over from the summer break and decide, I'm dropping pants. So as I've said many times before, this is an issue that is broad and is not speaking to not addressing and looking at it. But this is incredibly broad issue. And I think what Mr. Wallaston said needs to be taken into consideration in order to the policy, really, as they call it, but we're going to have to gather information from other districts and just consider, but we have to remove ourselves, as we sit in our ages, everyone is removed, except for me, the student next to me. So you don't have to like, but that's how the world moves. That's how it moves. And that's when we have a conflict, when people, and I use myself, as Mr. Panos said, when people our age, I'm fifty-four, I don't think like a fifteen-year-old or a sixty-year-old in twenty-two years. And you also have to be prepared, because we'll talk about this later, it's easy to sit here and say, this is the rule, this is the rule, and of course, of course, of course. Y'all know the kids that we have in society, period. So when they push back, and then we are trying to enforce something, you have to think about what's the battle which you're in. Just put it out there, this is not new news, Mr. Panos, because I've had this conversation before. So just have that in your mind when you go before your committee, and this is what you're dealing with. I'm just trying to give you, again, I've walked through the change of thirty years, working in the schools, not outside the schools, in the schools.
Mr. Halleck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm definitely in favor of sending, of sending this to the, the policy committee. If you want to look at the whole policy, that's fine, but I definitely feel, I'm, I'm, I feel that the undergarment issue needs to be addressed here. I just feel, I don't care if you're male, female, I'm showing undergarments is definitely inappropriate. I feel it shouldn't be allowed. Also, I, I think that, it's not, every student is, has to follow this, this policy. So I, I, I don't feel that it's, you know, a racial or, or anything like that issue here, because it's being enforced throughout the district. So, and that's, that's all I can say right now. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor and then Mr. Wallaston.
Thank you. I think, I just feel like she, Abby said what she said a couple of meetings ago. And what we don't want to do is take the portions of what she said that resonates with us and decide, that's cute, that, that makes me feel better, I'm going to choose, because that's not the entirety of what she said. And I don't want to take this motion and run with it when this came about because the student said something bigger, and then we're choosing a portion of, a nibble of it to, to tackle. I think that's irresponsible on our part. I'm not supporting this motion. I think unless we're going to edit it to say that we await what the group is going to send to us, because they didn't say what, they didn't ask anything yet. They're, she's still in data part, you know? And so I don't want to, like, throw anything to policy maybe just yet without the ask. I think it's just irresponsible. And it, it was, Mr. Panos, I was there in the nineties, and the guys, everything was oversized. I wore my Nautica jacket every day. Never got dress coded because I was a good kid. But the squeaky wheel gets the gre, you know, gets the grease. So the, the unruly kid is going to get dress coded. The, the, the girl who always is showing her shoulders is going to get dress coded, but maybe the, the kid with the eight, you know, the, all the As is not going to be. So we can't pick and choose when this policy needs to be enforced, because I think this is an adult issue. I think along the way, we dropped the ball and people started to decide that, hey, that's okay, and that's not okay. So I think it needs to go to policy, but it needs to go to policy the way it was intended from what she asked, and, and not just pick a portion that makes sense for you or whoever is asking for this motion.
Mr. Wallaston and then one more round with Mr. Panos.
All right, so I agree with the sentiments of my colleagues. I think we're being extremely dismissive by even focusing on this mainly because the student rep brought us this, this graph. And from the student's perspective and from the teacher's perspective, the issue, the biggest issue they have is with item A, item B, item I, and item I. And, and this, well, I said it in the, the board policy numbers, but item one, item two, and item, item nine. We're right here discussing sending item eleven. Look at the differences. These are the ones that people mainly have an issue with, the students and the district employees. Item one, item two, item nine, those are the top three. And we're sitting here talking about item eleven because it's sagging. The student voice just came back with, this is data, this is actual data about, about what the teachers have an issue with and what the, what the, what the students have an issue with. And we're focusing on, it's not, it's not in the top three. And I'm not saying there's an, I, I'm, I agree with wearing your pants at waist level. It's what I believe. But we're sitting here and we're discussing sending that only, that solely to policy when we, the student rep has brought issues to us, multiple issues with the policy, and we're taking one that wasn't even in the top three. And that's what we're going to run with. And that's where I draw the line, and that's where I have an issue. So if we make the motion, a motion that says, hey, let's send the entire thing for revision, I would be in agreement. But to focus on the undergarment showing, it's, it's going to be a no for me. Hard pass.
Mr. Panos and Ms. Cantor.
Okay, no one is focusing, just telling, no one can focus and simply tell the policy committee that they can't cover anything else. Where that came from, I don't know. We're simply saying that we heard straight from a student, and this was repeated, you know, this said several times, it was, now, if, if they enforce them correctly, then the inequity would disappear. This was the point that was brought out based upon, based upon the argument that was made. There was a, a, there was a further point which probably, you know, that, that was said about people deriving certain opinions, that they would be, young ladies would acquire the feeling that they were at fault for unwanted or unsolicited sexual advances, things of this, which I think is, would fall in the policy, would, would fall in the, in the category of being irrelevant, because it, it's just something else. But the initial point was that it was an inequity, because in the one case, for girls, this, this was enforced, and for boys, it wasn't. Well, obviously, they're not supposed, both of them are wrong, and the way you take care of it, you take care of it was to make, is to enforce the, with, obviously in the policy, but obviously needs some sort of specificity added to it. So all we're doing is simply emphasizing this particular point. So I, I don't see that there's any contradictory, contradiction to taking those up. The other point about this is that this data does not say, oh, they don't want this, you know, or that, or that they're, they're violating. And some, some are saying, obviously, some are saying they want the coat. There's just simply, these are items that they want discussed. Am I correct? That's what it's about, that it's, that, that over here is, not whether they should, I mean, are they all saying everybody has to wear a coat? Is that, and so are we saying here that the staff, the staff are over here saying that, is that, is that what this means here when, when you, when you look on the first item? Item one, has to do with wearing, right? So does this mean the staff and the students are all saying, yeah, we all, we should all come in and wear our overcoats inside?
I assume not have to, but they should be allowed to, correct?
Yes. That, those points of data show that both staff and students believe that students should be able to wear their coats inside.
Oh, okay. So all of these items are things that are to loosen, to essentially eliminate most of the, most of the dress code.
I will send, I will be sending you the data. The data will be explaining each individual point that the students and staff have both requested alterations to.
So, so we're saying that a huge percentage of the staff think that the students should wear overcoat in, in class.
It's not that they should wear, it's that they think they should be allowed to. They're, the word you're voicing things-
No, I say should, okay, they should be allowed to wear, well, I'm rather surprised that the staff-
It's the difference between these people should be wearing them, or they should be allowed to wear them. The key word being allowed.
Wouldn't we just eliminate the dress code?
Ms. Cantor and then Ms. Clace.
What I'm really concerned about is children's education, the students' education. And I find it ironic that this is like a number one priority in the school system for students. I really do. I'm really concerned about all children learning and behaving and being prepared to be the best they can, to be able to attain a great education through the Windsor Public School Systems, and to be successively independent financially and raise a family and be a good, productive member of society. So I, I'm having a hard time dealing with this. I just wanted to say that, because there are so many other priorities in education than the dress code. Thank you.
Clace.
So I, I just want to bring us back to the matter. I think there is broad consensus in this group that the policy could be looked at. I think we all agree to that. I think discomfort is in the specificity of the motion being sent to policy. So I think what we're, some of us are asking is, can that be broadened so that we can consider what the students have brought about their survey, perhaps talk to other people in the community, and perhaps look, and look at the most, the specificity of the, the thing that was said, the motion that was said, but also look at everything in a broader context, so the policy committee have a conversation and then bring it as a recommendation. But I think what I heard is broad consensus is that it should go to policy. I don't think we're going to get the vote. It's going to be specific.
And I think, and I had talked to Mr. Panos about this idea when he had raised it the other day, and I said, you know, we don't, we shouldn't have to send this to policy right away until we hear, I know the Action Club's working on something, it may go through school governance, which gives it a little more consensus between parents, teachers, administrators, and students. And Mr. Panos says, I didn't, no, I didn't mean this should be sent to policy immediately, but that this should be something when the school does come up with something that should be looked at. I think that the way it's drafted right now, I will vote against it, but I will hopefully be voting later on for the whole dress code to be an open thing that the policy committee looks at. I will oppose this tonight, the way it's written, but I will support opening it up to everything that board members want to look at. And it could mean also, if board members want to, to be having an open night that we've had before on this issue a number of years ago. I know Mr. Halleck in, in the past has done a good presentation about uniforms. I know Abby talked about looking at the Bloomfield uniform type policy as part of, of the work that she was doing. So I probably will vote against this as written, but I will be supporting a wide open down the road, hopefully there'll be a motion to that effect down the next few meetings, to be opening up the dress code to be looked at. So. Abby, did you have one more thing to say?
I would just say there is a broad set of data. There is a broad spectrum of things that could be looked at. I would say that just looking at one particular thing at one moment in time sort of diminishes the ability of, from the student's perspective, to be able to get the entire, sort of, fashion dress policy looked at. In the past, when certain things were just focused on, rather than looking at it from a broad view, this motion got stymied. And this was my experience in the, in my sophomore year on the Governance Council. So I would say when it is just getting pieced apart, it becomes very hard from the student's perspective to be able to make any type of change. And what I will say is the reason why, from the student's perspective, we're so focused on the school dress code is because my role on here is to speak for the students. And a lot of, amount of students have mentioned that the dress code is often for them, which is why this has been brought up so many times, is because I am acting in my role to protect the students' voice.
Appreciate that. At this point, I'm ready to have the vote. Is everybody ready to vote on this? All those in favor of sending the motion as it is to, to policy, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Abstention, motion fails, three to six. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to quickly run through this, we have, so Phase Three of Sage Park's HVAC project was approved at a special town meeting on January third, unanimous vote. Also, for the community, I have started at the behest of our communications coordinator, Ms. Gill, started a podcast called Chat and Chill with Super Hill. Not like Superman, so I don't hear the snickering over here.
It was supportive snicker.
Supportive snicker. Oh, okay. So I am, I'm excited to announce the debut of our first ever podcast. So you should have already seen the first one, which was done, one of our, in the culinary department, one of our students who, we have a student recipe that's going, it's actually in the NASA hunch competition. So potentially, the further along this meal goes in the program, it has an opportunity to be accepted by NASA ultimately in Texas, and it will become one of their- in Texas, and it will become one of their freeze dried meals that will go off the space with them. I tasted the pre-freeze dried, it was very delicious. So I'm hoping the student wins. And it was nice to actually do my first podcast, I've never done one, but to work with one of our students. And she's really interested in culinary arts and is looking to go off to school. She's a senior and that, that's just, it's really good. I just, I also, I've completed the second podcast, so that will be released tomorrow. And so we're trying to keep a pace of doing two a month at this point. And the focus will be, I'm looking forward to bringing more stories that matter most to, featuring students, educators, alumni, staff, parents, and more. And more would be like across the community and other people that are relevant to education. You will hear about the stories and journeys of our amazing school community as, as they navigate through the buildings. You can listen to these on Apple Podcasts or through the link on the website when it's sent, or our other social media platforms. You can also Google Chat and Chill with Super Hill.
Great name.
And you will be able to get the podcast. So this is also part of, you know, who I am and what I've said again from day one. There's a lot of good and great things going on in Windsor. I am not shy about promoting Windsor. And I've said many times before, it's the reason why I moved here. I did not move here for a job. I was working here four years before I moved my family to Windsor. So I could have kept my job and lived somewhere else. So there are a lot of great things here. And I think that a lot of times, it's society in general, right? We do it in our own homes. We don't focus on the good. We focus on, I think too often, the negative or the bad things. I've decided in my career, 30 years in education, there are enough people doing that, the negative part, so I let them do it. I'm, I'm not going to do that. So I want to promote the good things because no one ever hears about the good things. It's like, you know, we wait till graduation time and this is the valedictorian, salutatorian, you know, class president, and this one did this. And people think, oh, oh, wow, great. And they get the one clap the one day. But these are students doing this work every single day throughout the school year. I also encourage board members and the public to visit a school. Don't, the COVID thing is not an excuse anymore. You can go to a school, they're going to run your license through our Raptor system. And, you know, you want to visit, you can visit. So people can actually see what's happening. I feel it's necessary to repeat, no, I'm never going to engage you on social media, never, period. So that's your platform, whoever you are. You can have it. You can continue to talk on it. I will do my coffee talks, my public meetings. I have no problem meeting with people in my office. But I am a one-on-one or in-your-face person. And I think social media conversation, it doesn't benefit anyone, but the people hiding behind a keyboard. So I will never, ever respond to that. And this podcast is yet one more thing to promote all the good things that are happening in Windsor Public Schools. So that's what you're going to get. On Saturday, January 21st, Sage Park will be hosting their third VEX IQ Robotics Qualifying Competition. The students in the TSA or Technology Student Association Program have been working hard to get their robots ready, and I'm looking forward to them doing a great job. This is, again, one more positive thing. Hopefully, I'll be able to get an interview in with some reps and students from this program for one of the podcasts. But this is another good thing. I know our president is very involved in this as well, the robotics program. These, these are the things that students do. This is, as Ms. Cantor said, I'm about student learning and about school. I'm with you, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you.
This is what school is about, right? Like, not diminishing other topics that have been discussed. But that's not why I came into education. I chose not to go into law enforcement and corrections for a reason. I have a ton of friends, mom's a retired cop, a lot of respect. But I chose not to do that, because there were just things I didn't want to be engaged in. Our Windsor High School girls basketball team is enjoying an exciting season so far under the supervision of Coach Brittany Huggins, who's a Windsor alum, class 2007. I am so proud of Brittany. And she will be, very shortly, upcoming podcast. So I already have a number of them listed out, and she is one. She's nervous, so I'm probably putting her on the spot right now. So many of our alumni are returning to our district for their careers, and I'm very proud of that fact. That means that they had a good experience in Windsor. And so, good enough so that they finish college, they come back, they want to work here. They graduate from high school, Windsor High, they've worked in a few other places, they want to come work here. Currently, the girls have an eight and three record, so they're definitely doing great, and I'm really proud. The next coffee talk is on Tuesday, January 24th, at 4:30 in the LP Wilson Auditorium. Due to me having to attend a funeral for my family out of state, we had to move this week's coffee talk. So that's why it's on January 24th. Also, all schools will be closed on Monday, February 20th, and Tuesday, February 21st for the president's day break. District offices will be open on February 21st. And to add insult to injury with our discussion, I know we had all these groups and all these things. One of my plans last year that did not get underway, the coffee talk did, but I didn't really get to do what I wanted to do, was to start a student senate. So I'm going to start a student senate. I've already asked the administration in middle school and high school to get me some names by the end of this week. And there'll be representation, male and female, all grades, from, you know, so it'd be eight, obviously, from the high school and six from the middle school. And so the point of the student senate, I'm looking to model myself after what my colleague, Tim Sullivan, does at Cracked. They will meet with me approximately two hours a month, and they will come here. They'll get community service hours, but they will, I will get active student voice continuously. I'm not a believer in one voice. I'm not. And I'm not a believer in just the good kids speak. So I say that, I know maybe some people might not understand it, but you know what I mean. So I don't really believe people don't understand that. I specifically told the administrators, I do not want my straight A kids. They do a lot. I'm proud of them. But they caused enough ruckus, as you can see. I don't need any more of them. But what I, why I did this specifically is because the students who are not our straight A kids, and I'm not talking about kids failing either, you need to focus on learning, but the kids in the middle always get overlooked. They always get overlooked. And they're the ones, I guarantee you, who addressed this survey more than anyone else. Because I know kids, I know my field. So I want to sit down with them, and I want them to feel like they really have a voice. And I'm not talking about, you know, some cursory act, like, oh, you spoke, I gave you something to eat, bye. They have a voice. So the things that they're going to bring up, you guys are going to hear about it. And the things that aren't required for the board to do, we're going to make changes. They're going to come up with recommendations. And we're going to implement those recommendations as long as they're safe and they're of benefit to the school community. So that's something I wanted to do, so which is interesting, listens to all the, I know we have the SGC, we have, you know, the Student Action Club, and there's nothing to get rid of those things, obviously. But this is one more opportunity for student voice to be heard. I hear from adults all the time, all the time, like, too much. So I want to hear from students. Because we keep saying, we're here for students, we care about students, but we never ask students much of anything. But we make all decisions for them, you know, with them absent from the conversation. And so I don't want to do that anymore. So that's, so you'll hear more about that. That would be my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Dr. Hill about his report? Ms. Cantor?
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it fits the scenario. And I'm sorry. At the Windsor Public High School, there is an outdoor pool. Is that being repaired at all? I know it's not, I don't think it's being used in the summer for swimming. Now, the indoor one is, but does anybody know about that, what's going on with that?
Yes, I'll let Ms. Bach answer that.
Thank you. So it is used in the summer. That actually is the town of Windsor's pool for park and rec. So the park and rec through the town of Windsor uses the outside pool.
So you can, so students use that?
Through park and rec, not through Windsor Public Schools. I know it's.
Okay. No, I didn't know. And I just wandered in. The times I did see it, it was empty, you know, wa-, no water in it.
Yeah. And I believe last summer, they were, they were doing some, something mechanical, so it was off. But yeah, they drain it and then they fill it up back up every spring.
Thank you.
And any other questions? Mr. Panos?
I'm intrigued by your statements. I hear from adults all the time, but not from students. Well, you have a whole bunch of podcasts and coffee clashes with adults, you set them up that way.
To hear from them?
Obviously, they're done for you to hear from the adults. Why don't you do a coffee down in, down in the corner of high school?
The coffee, you're right, Mr. Panos. The coffee talk is for the adults. That's why I said I failed in my own desire last year. So the coffee talk.
You caused the problem.
I caused it. But the thing that Dr. Hill will do is I believe in fixing the problem. I have no problem with saying, okay, I messed up. Time to fix it. That's an educator, right? I took a test. I didn't do as great as I'd like to. I'm taking it again, and to get my A. Because that's what I get.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Clace?
Yeah, we had a public comment person talk about fees. Do we have any idea about how many groups are charged fees that are largely Windsor residents? And is there any way we can have an understanding of that for the budget sessions?
For our budget?
Yeah.
Sure. I would have to pull that, you know, off the top of my head. I can think of a few. Water rats being, you know, number one. But the policy absolutely needs to be looked at. It's a policy from years and years ago. The, the dollar amount that's attached to the policy doesn't even match any, like, we're currently undercharging. I understand what people are saying, but we're actually undercharging. It doesn't even cover our custodial overtime that's coming out of our general fund. So it is something we need to look at, budget and through policy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Does any, are there any committee reports? Looking, seeing none. Okay. Other matters, announcements, regular Board of Ed meetings. Board of Ed Public Forum with the Finance Committee immediately following on Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, 6:00 p.m. at LPW Boardroom. And as we mentioned before, this will probably be another opportunity to see Dr. Hill's PowerPoint. And item 13B, Board of Ed Public Forum with Finance Committee immediately following on Tuesday, January 31st, 6:00 p.m. at the LPW Boardroom. 13C, Board of Ed Public Forum with Finance Committee immediately following on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. And 13D, Board of Ed Finance Committee, Tuesday, February 14th, at 6:30 LPW, if needed, in the hope, as Mr. Lockhart mentioned, that it will not be needed in particular on that day. And the next Board of Ed Regular Meeting is Wednesday, February 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. in the LPW Boardroom. Next item is Audience to Visitor.
Good evening. This is Alexis Shaq from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be promoted to panelist. After you make your comments, you will return to attendee status. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you. And as we said earlier, on the Audience to Visitor, for those in attendance here at the two and a half minute mark, Vice President Lockhart will hold up a red card and then hold it up continuously at the three minute mark. And at that point, please conclude your remarks. For people who can't see us on the phone, Mr. Lockhart will mention when that two and a half minute mark and the three minute mark are met. Is there anybody online or on the phone, we'll start that way this time, who wants to address the board?
Mr. President, there are no individuals with their hand raised, and there are no questions in the queue.
Great. Anybody in the boardroom? Okay. And without objection, a closed Audience to Visitor. Thank you. We have a new item, number 15. Is there a motion?
Yeah, 15, because we're. I moved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss a matter involving confidential student records, inviting the superintendent of school, Dr. Hill, and Mr. Calvin Kers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion voted by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Abstention, motion carries 900. We are out of the regular session and into executive session at 8:55. We're back in the meeting. At this point, it's 9:25, and I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move for adjournment.
Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Cantor. Any discussion? I think Mr. Panos wants to object to that?
Object.
Did you have a specific objection? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Abstention, motion carries 900. We are adjourned at 9:25, same minute we came back.
Yep.